Before we start the official meeting, I just want to say again for the recording and for anyone who is online. Family Promise, 100 county will not be hurt at tonight's meeting, July 12th, 2022. The matter will be carried to a future date. We are anticipating it to be the first, our first meeting in August. We will announce an alternative location because of the number of people who've expressed interest in attending. We will announce that no later than our next meeting on July 26th. It'll also be published on the Borough website. So when we get to that, we'll make it an official carrying, but I just wanted to say that before we gallop it. So we're good? All right. So I'm calling the meetings to order. This is the Tuesday, July 12th, 2022 regular meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. Meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, both adequate and electronic notice that this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the 100 county Democratic Courier newspapers on or about March 17th, 2022. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building located at 38 Park Avenue. And any handicap accessible interest is there too. Posted on municipal website. Provides to municipal clerk and distributes all persons, if any, requesting copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. The meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what ordinary legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Everyone please rise as you are able for a flexible. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's call the roll.
Andrew, Eric, Mr. Campania?
Here.
Russia?
Here.
Mrs. Inglehart here, Mr. Bundy?
Here.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Has anybody heard from Mr. Hill?
I have not heard from him and let me just double check if he emailed me, but I don't, I don't think so.
Yes, we have Mr. Parker, Mr. Cook and Miss, if our excuse. Ms. Kaczynski here, Mr. Mariko?
Here.
Ms. McManus here, Mr. Treppen?
Here.
All right, thank you. All right, I see you do have a couple of folks in the engineering, but I'm seeing, I am seeing the planner and the engineer for the applicant, so that's, so that's all those there, okay. Item one on the agenda, public comment period for items not currently in front of the board. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, item two on the agenda, Mayor.
I have nothing.
Mr. Parker is not here. I don't have any council comments. HPC comments, I do not see the chair. I hear the attendee panel, we had one come through, was that before the last meeting? I'm trying to remember. HPC.
That was, that was last meeting.
That was last meeting, right, so I think that was.
That was distributed.
Yep, yeah, that was, and that was minor. Item five on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our prior meeting of June 28th. They've been previously circulated, I get a motion on the minutes. Second, Fudney. Any further discussion or clarification on the minutes?
Andrew Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Bundy?
Yes.
Mr. Campania?
Yes.
Russia?
Yes.
Mrs. Inglehart?
I'm staying.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
And Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item six on the agenda is something that was in front of us last meeting, but we asked to keep moving forward as well. Council adopted on first reading two weeks ago, ordinance 2022-08, which has to do with changes pertaining to the Historic Preservation Commission. So that they can have status as certified over government entity. We had some discussion, we got it pretty quickly and so we wanted to have Beth take a look at it, Karen take a look at it, and then the process is for us to by resolution, which was circulated previously, to determine whether or not it is or is not consistent with our master plan and if there were any comments to transmit to council to do so, so Beth.
Okay, okay.
Make sure that you're close enough to the microphone, so.
Can I just make a clarification? It's our resolution 2022-06 in regards to council resolution 2022-08.
Ordinance 08.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure there wasn't a problem here. There's a two.
Maybe we should say PD.
Yeah, it's a little PD thing, 2022. At least it's 2022, sorry.
Easily make that change. We'll have to make whatever changes we need to based upon if there are any recommendations tonight anyway, so.
Okay, so that's not a typo. Okay. Sorry to interrupt, I just didn't want people to start with that. The beginning. So I did get a chance to take a closer look and Karen and I had a conversation earlier about the, about the ordinance and so I highlighted a couple of the couple of things that were noted at the last meeting and a couple of other items, so I thought I'd just run through the ordinance and we can talk about it and Karen, if I forget something, check my phone. Let's see. So one of the changes that we had talked about that first, at that last meeting and the first item in this ordinance is on it's PDF page three, section K, role of the HPC. And in here, it talks about the existing line which discusses this is about procedures for applications that require planning board review. It requires that the planning, that the HPC issue a report, which is typical. And then that the planning board shall issue a written approval or denial, this would change the start. Quote, taking into account the HPC report and quote, recommendations pursuant to the municipal land use law. And so the recommendation for this section is not a, it's not a wholesale change of intent, but really just some clarification in here. And so what's being recommended is rather than simply to take into account, but to take into consideration what the HPC report says. So it's a little bit lesser of a standard, but I think it also provides a little bit of clarity in the sense that taking into account suggests maybe a separate document or separate findings. This is really, it needs to be part of the board's record for its decision making for any application that comes to be required. So that's that first item on PDF page three. We also have a significant section in this report dealing with definitions. And there are a lot of definitions that are very specific to historic preservation and I have no comments or concerns about them, but what does raise concern is we have definitions in here that are also repeated in our zoning ordinance. And I think that is a problem. We simply don't want to have conflict of how something as simple as, you know, building is defined. So right now, this definition section discusses, in addition to the definitions included in your existing ordinance, sections 1201, 1404, 1405, 1631, the following definitions. The recommendation is that the introductory language for this set of definitions make clear that these definitions are specific to this ordinance. So when the term building, for example, is used in this ordinance, it refers to this definition written in the ordinance as opposed to the borough's existing definition in ordinance section 1201. So the, the entire purpose is to just simply eliminate any conflicts between our two bodies of definitions in, in Borough Code.
Before you move forward, is there any reason why the definitions in this ordinance in front of us should be at all different than the ones in, say, 1201 and the other sections?
Perhaps not, but I'm a little probably not. I think it's best that they be the same because what's being regulated by the HPC should be the same as what's being regulated by the planning board, for example, like what a building would constitute, but so they should be the same, but I made a judgment as to which, which of those should be captured, how they could merge.
Right, I, I understand that you're, you're proposing that we say, we recommend that council put some language in here that says that any definitions in what follows be only limited to this scope, which helps that conflict. I'm asking the question, do we want to suggest to go one step further, which is strike anything that is defined elsewhere in the Borough ordinances except if there is a difference between how HPC might view it as opposed to how other things are done?
I think that's, that's a good idea, but I'd like for that type of analysis to go one step farther. Because I'm not clear on whether or not whether or not the term, so the term facade is defined here. I would want to see how else that's used elsewhere in Borough Code to make sure how it's used there. It's consistent, the intent there is consistent with how we're defining it here. So you have to do a search everywhere the word facade comes up in the entire ordinance. Yeah, I don't want it to sound like such a Herculean.
No, it's a serious.
I do think that's literally.
It's a serious matter.
I think that would be a good idea. I don't know that a lot, that we're going to see a lot of use of, some of, I mean facade, yes, but other terms like encroaching or historic, things like that. I think there's going to be limited concern, but I do think that's a good step to take to make sure that we're not creating unintended problems down the line.
Because I would feel more, I would feel most comfortable is if the book of the borough's set of ordinances defined one word once and then we just refer back to, in, in subsequent sections of the code, right? That would be the easiest thing. Unless there's a specific reason where we say, in the narrow scope of review by HPC, we are using a difference, whether it's more exhaustive or more, you know, or not definition of something, I mean, not because we're building, but just a pick one. Because I don't want to avoid the problem.
That could also set some, I agree with Jeff, I mean, because it could set us up for a conflict.
Excuse you, could you use the microphone?
We are.
I'm sorry, we.
She is not.
We don't have to push the button.
Okay, it's on.
You have to be close to it.
Okay, I'll move it closer. Sorry, Lois.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Jeff. It could, it could set us up for a conflict later on that we can't even predict now. Especially if we have to override a, an HPC ruling or if a developer interprets our ruling or their ruling differently and points to the two different definitions. Will it affect them negatively? I guess my question when it comes to the certification? If they don't, if, if they, for example, your definition facade, if in their definitions it says, see, you know, Borough ordinance, blah, 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 for our definition. Will that hurt them negatively in order to get their certification? Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think so. There's no set of I, I would have very different, well, maybe not very different, but I would have a different recommendation if there's for a set of definitions pulled from, say, the model CLG Historic Preservation Ordinance, but no such ordinance exists or is being enforced by the state. So these definitions, I, I'm sure they need to be consistent with historic preservation standards and guidelines, but we have the flexibility here to alter the definitions to suit Borough purposes.
And, and to add on to that, I'm not opposed to if their definition is better than ours, or, you know, I expect you would also recommend that to us.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that if I were going to go through this, I would report on what are the conflicting definitions, how, or how are the terms already used? And then what's the recommendation from there? Maybe it's our definition, our existing definition is better, maybe this, maybe this creates a, a, an alternative.
So I, I think that we can, if we're, if we're thinking about like recommendation to, so to council on the ordinance, I think we can capture all of this. I think we can say at a minimum, we need some language added to make sure that it is just for this set of, this section of stuff, but we should probably also maybe, like Karen, include a, a recommendation that council examine for duplication of definitions within the ordinances in toto and see if there's, you know, reason to, to, to be, I mean, again, we're advising, it's not like we're writing for that. Okay.
And I think the next section. Section C, right, yeah, yeah, sorry about that. The section of page 10, item C, general guidelines. And so this section talks about, these are the building design guidelines, beginning with one and then it goes through three through 20 perhaps, 20 the 21, and then it goes to building massing and scale of new buildings and additions, facade treatment, building materials, et cetera. These are essentially the borough's historic district design guidelines. One of the things that has become clearer as I review this ordinance is that we have these design standards that the HPC regularly uses to judge all of its applications. But these are not design standards that the planning board regularly uses to judge our own application. So for example, if you think about just Lee Roth, Lee Roth application just recently, at the site in historic district, but we were not asking that applicant to request relief and to demonstrate compliance with, for example, each of the facade renovations, each of the building materials, all of the 40 or so standards in here. The way the procedure typically works here in Borough is the HPC conducts their review, they make recommendation, the planning board incorporates its recommendation as see fit in, in its own resolutions and decision making. So I think there's an opportunity here to clarify this process and to make clear exactly who's reviewing these district standards, who's and who's enforcing them. Because right now, it suggests that it could be the planning board doing the enforcement, but it's not quite clear and as I said, historicalization, the HPC that does the review. So this is an opportunity for us to provide each of these documents and state in a single sentence, not a, not a wholesale position of design standards, but in a single sentence or so to indicate essentially how these standards will be used. Are they are they requirements that the planning board shall impose on applications? Are they guidelines that the planning board should wish developers to review and to take into consideration, essentially meaning that no relief can or should be granted from them? Or are these standards that the HPC alone should consider in its review of applications and include in this, in the report to the planning board, which then we then consider to be semi-fill. So.
Right, because we can imagine an application where it's a redevelopment of something, some existing property that is in the district or otherwise regulated by the HPC. Where when we're looking at the complete application, a complete site plan application, the enforcement of every single one of these standards may be difficult if not impossible, and that the planning board would want to balance preservation with other aspects that are goals and objectives in our master plan, so on and so forth. And so you're suggesting that we, you're raising the question, I'll put it that way, of where, where should we be drawing that distinction of, is this just how HPC evaluates and makes his report to, to the planning board? Or are these things that we are then binding planning board review to?
Yeah, and so sort of before we get into crafting language specific for the recommendation, I think the board should think about, are you satisfied with the current procedure? Or are you looking to strengthen and have the ability to better enforce the design standards set forth in this order? If so, actually regardless, I think we should have some clarifying language.
I think Jeff's point is a good one and it goes both ways. We want to be able to flex our muscle when it comes to adding requirements and resolutions to protect something specific, which we've done in the past as well. It, it, I could see it being useful both ways. We've never had, that I can recall only once, can I recall us like overriding and being kind of against necessarily the planning board's recommendations on something. But I'd like to have, be able to have the muscle to hold a developer accountable. Because the, the HPC does not have that ability, so I think it's our duty to make sure someone does.
But the flip side then would be, oh, I'm sorry, Jim just logged in, so if you want to say it's 7:20, Jim, go ahead. My, the other side of that is if, for example, someone comes with an application that HPC, based on the set of, of design standards, the application fails to meet one or more of them, they're going to have to seek waivers from every single one of those in terms of their relief. And I worry about the burden that it might place on an applicant who has made a good faith effort. Right. I'm not talking about somebody who's trying to act poorly. Somebody who's made a good faith effort, has sat down with HPC, has gone through the review, has come up with a project, a proposal, but that just simply can't quite make all of these standards work for their particular project, or they're choosing not to. And then we're going to have to have testimony on the record to ask to justify relief from design standards. And I, I fear that it might create a situation that is overly burdensome. When the intent is not, intent is to hold them to a, the intent is to articulate what our standard is and what we're looking for. But not make it such that an applicant has to come in with lots of extra testimony to, to ask, you know, to put on the record requests for the, for that relief.
And I think one of the things that kind of made us start looking at it is if you take a look in those sections, sometimes the word shall is used, sometimes the word should is used, so.
Okey.
Yeah. So that's, that's kind of what made it jump out.
So what, so is there a okay, so not only do we have a shall and a should, we also have a, is this a enforceable standard or is this a suggested ideal? I don't know what the right word is there, but.
I think if we, if we make clear that these are standards that the HPC should use to review an application, but are not requirements of Borough Code, then, and Karen maybe disagree, but I think then the shalls and the should can remain because we provided this overriding language that says, even though it says shall, you don't need to request a variance from it essentially.
Isn't that what we do now?
Yeah, but, but.
It was unclear.
But it's unclear, that's the fault.
Yeah, so this would be clarifying language that says, and this would have to be repeated and I'm sort of just on the fly, but the following standards are intended, shall be used by the HPC in their review of applications that come before them. They are, the planning board shall use them as guidance, enforceable guidance. I feel like that's not the right phrase, but something along those lines.
Maybe we adopt back what we used before, which is essentially what you consider. Consider, yeah, with taking into consideration in connection with it, with its determination, yeah.
Because it allows us to put it out there saying like, look, this is what we want it to look like, but it allows the planning board to let HPC run its process. And then when it comes to us, not necessarily require someone to seek relief from a dozen design standards that are just not necessarily feasible and ask, again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make it easy for somebody to, to just walk all over the district. I'm trying, I, I think that they, they, if we make it that the, that these are where HPC is going to make their strongest case and then they transmit to, to, to the planning board, that might, that might get us to where we need to go.
And it's not like the HPC's recommendation is going to the void afterwards. They come here, the planning board has the ability to, if they have a negative recommendation from the HPC, essentially saying the applicant has refused to accommodate requests of facade changes, wherever the case may be. I mean, that could be a discussion point with planning board and that may well be important in the applicant's testimony for relief. You know, it's going to tie into negative criteria, for example, as they try to talk about consistency with the master plan. We have a lot of historic districts, goals and objectives. If they're standing there in conflict with recommendations from the HPC in C, it depends on the variance, obviously, but, but I could see how those items are going to be tied together and the HPC's negative commentary is going to be very relevant as to whether or not they're entitled to a setback variance for the front facade or a building height variance, or, you know, something that impacts, say, the appearance of the building.
So Susan's, so Susan's concerned about us, I think, some enforcement power you feel could be captured if we were to go that way.
Yeah, I, 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 now that you clarified it.
It's not, I'm not suggesting that the language that I suggested a minute ago, it's not items of relief. It's not that we're saying you need to apply for relief from this item. So I don't want to suggest it's really an enforcement, but I think you're going to get some leverage from the HPC if they're not in support of the application, depending on what type of relief the applicant may be looking for. And they're in for a fire in application, you know, and they need no variances, no waivers. So the worst case scenario, they have an ugly, you know, ugly project the HPC doesn't like, but it's entirely conforming with the ordinance. That, that's going to be an issue, quite frankly, because as we all know.
But it is rare.
Yes, it is. Sorry, Sarah.
Extremely rare in town that someone doesn't need relief from something.
Yes.
Even if it's.
Just because of the nature of the size of the parcels.
Yeah, absolutely.
And essentially, the board considers these recommendations of the HPC the same way that would any other expert has to. It's not obligated to, but it gives it that same kind of weight, can incorporate or how to incorporate it into its findings and, and resolutions, however, required for that particular task.
The way Beth described it, it, it essentially isn't going to work the same way. If they have an issue with it, it comes to us. They have to prove that it, you know, like you said, it, it's consistent with the master plan, to do that anyway for a site plan removal. And if it's a concern of ours, we can always add it in, in a resolution.
And, and since we're going through this and taking the time, you know, it just popped up, so.
I think the only concern I have, because it's probably the only time where we had a conflict with the HPC, where we overrode them in a major way, and that was a demolition of a building. And I.
Talking about cut blocks.
I'm talking about cut blocks.
Yeah.
And we took a lot of heat from the developer for not, for making them jump through hoops. Frankly, I think especially after having left the site, I think it was found, but we really considered that long and hard before, and, and really, really long and hard before we made a decision. And yeah, they had to jump through hoops, but they actually proved their case, so.
And they had to bring in a bunch of experts and have put a lot of testimony in the record.
And it's very impressive. I guess what I want to know is your scenario is talking more about facades and, you know, design. How would it affect a, a possible demo, I guess, and how, and do we still have that authority as a board to kind of influence what does and what doesn't get?
There's a whole section on demolitions.
Yeah, I, I'd like that, I'd like to make sure that that's addressed in the.
So, okay, so there's a section here, a couple of sections that I'm going to take together for that discussion. The first one is demolition, and then there's relocation within the district and relocation within the Borough as well. And so these are, they, they go well beyond design guidelines. It's really about the, the location and the presence of these historic structures. And so these are sections G, H and I in the ordinance, bring, bring that to the beginning on PDF page 17. And in here, it talks about for each of these sections, it has these two introductory paragraphs that give some guidance, and then there are a number of factors that should be considered. And in each of these cases, I think there is sort of lack of clarity as to what the board is supposed to be considering. So to the, I think to your question though, just first and foremost is can, can buildings be demolished, for example? Right now, there's language, existing language not proposed for change that says applications to, to demolish any structure within the historic district must be presented to the Flemington HPC and must address all of the following issues, those issues of the factors I just listed. And so it doesn't say that demolition is prohibited or permitted under certain conditions. It's I don't think this word is actually used, but I think it's very clearly discouraged by stating that you've got to make the application to the HPC and these eight or 10 factors need to be considered. And they're pretty strong, you know, it talks about, you know, the historic nature of the building, the condition of the building, you know, impacts on the character of the area. And then they've added the impact of its removal upon future development or redevelopment. So, and you'll, in that line, the impact of its removal for future development or redevelopment is added for each of the relocation provisions as well. So for each of these three sections, I think there's, there's two issues. So one, I think we want to provide some clarity as to how the HPC should be reviewing each of these applications. And then two, I have some concern about that final line that's been added. Should be reviewing each of these applications and then two, I have some concern about that final line that's been added. The impact of removal or or demolition upon, uh, development or redevelopment. I just would like to see some clarity, like development or redevelopment of what, of the site, of the block, of the district, of the of the entire borough, region.
That that line screamed out at me, but honestly. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but Kara could say that could be interpreted both positively or negatively, so I, I, I agree, it's very, um, loosey goosey. Which is not a legal term, but.
Well, subjective, you know, I add the word, and.
Yeah, that's the word, and that's the word I should use.
And when, no, I like loosey goosey better, because I think it's actually even more open than.
Yeah, yeah, and and which isn't a bad thing, uh, in that case, it could go, it could be positive or negative to a developer trying to do their. You know, get their work done, so I don't necessarily know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think in the case of the HPC, it might not be a bad thing, so I. I mean, that's up to them to kind of make their recommendations, but that line screamed out.
Can I ask another question in the same section that is? Okay, let's say somebody is not coming in for sites that, they literally just wanna knock down a building. And they have to, they apply for demolition permit. But that, that's code official, right?
This is exactly what I thought.
Yeah.
But they're not, they're not, they're literally planning on doing nothing onto the site other than just knocking down. A structure within the district or listed property within town, right? What's the mechanism to prevent somebody from doing that if they're not going through site plan?
So it talks in here about the, you know, demolition is generally, you know, generally, the word generally has been added, generally not permitted except when, um. Public health or safety is risk or there are other reasons, those are all those factors. So I have to say, I don't think it's particularly clear, it's clear that they go to the HPC for, uh, for demolition review. Presuming if they say yes, I think obviously things can afford, if they say no, then I think they're at the point where they would need to. Appeal the ruling to the planning board and there's, there's a final section in this ordinance. That is existing that says any appeal of an HPC decision goes to the planning board.
Right, so so there is a protection in there. If someone wanted to knock down a building without, outside of a site approval process, right? Because they would have to apply for a demolition permit from, from construction official.
Correct. So for this session, I think that, uh, let me take the easy one first, and that is that one, the impact of removal upon future development or redevelopment. My impression is that this is intended to be interpreted to the site, sites development or redevelopment. And I say that because the item above it is the probable impact of its removal upon the character and ambiance of the historic district. So we seem to have the historic district covered, I think that this is intended to reflect economic conditions, that's my interpretation, I don't have. I'm sorry, I don't have, uh, details from the author of this change, but. But that's how this strikes me and there's nothing else in this section that addresses, uh, the economics of the project.
But then, but it could be read, as we've all said, like redevelopment of town, you know, writ large with, um.
Yeah.
You know, and and that's a, that's a, the ambiguity is concerning.
And the problem with that is if you don't have some sort of guideline, you're going to get somebody that really likes that building and somehow is gonna apply that into a redevelopment across town.
And that may be what, that may be the appropriate thing, we don't, we just don't know.
Which is, I hope, I hope that's a good idea ahead, yeah, I don't know, but.
And this doesn't apply to areas in the redevelopment.
Depends on the redevelopment.
Okay, the, um. The. I mean, the fact that we're going second district, district into, you know, national district district in the state. This is a huge, I think this is a huge issue that they need to clean this language up right now.
So the intent, yeah, the intent, the detail for this item I. In all three of these sections, I think needs to be clarified, I think we also need to make a recommendation in regard to the. The application of these reasons or factors as listed in paragraph one, so as I said before. I'm gonna start in the second line, the demolition or partial demolition of any structures deemed contributing or significant in the historic district is. Generally not permitted except when public health or safety is at risk as certified by a licensed structural engineer. Or there are other reasons to be. To be crucial for the future development and prosperity of the borough, so.
Prosperity, secure the general welfare, and to ourselves in our prosperity, I guess, it's, yeah, it's a little, yeah.
So what I'd like to see is this section getting cleaned up, I'd like to recommend elimination of the word generally. Is either permitted or it's not permitted, or I guess maybe it's permitted subject to certain conditions, so. Uh, so the demolition of contributing or significant is not permitted. Except when health or safety is at risk as certified by a licensed structural engineer, I have some concerns about that. Um, or there are other reasons deemed to be crucial for the future development prosperity of the borough and that. Uh, that or beginning, or there are other reasons deemed, uh, crucial, that's in addition to this ordinance, I think that line has the same concerns. As that last factor that we just talked about, you know, how do we define prosperity, future developments of of the entire borough, uh, I think there needs. These some clarification. For this, or simply, uh, or there are other factors as listed in item two below, I'm not sure that they need to go through. Uh, detail of how these items should be reviewed, simplification might be better, uh, as well. Um, and we have that, uh, that same additional language that I just read is specific to demolition as opposed to relocation provisions as well. Of the change in. L. L three. To make that as soon as possible, the same way we have at J. The sixty days. That's L. Three. Yes, thank you, this discusses the report, this is, uh, for. Procedures for designation of sites. The HPC is to report to the governing body, excuse me, the planning board. Reports to the governing body. I think we have, uh, some issues with changes in here, but it states the planning board. Uh, shall review and provide a report with recommendations to the governing body as soon as possible, but within sixty days, I'd recommend that we strike as soon as possible. And just, we give that a.
Give that.
So that we're gonna do that, I mean, we do the same with J, make it to that consistent, so if you're sixty days, I sixty days, J.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that's helpful, it's just confusing.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we've kind of walked through all the stuff that Kara and Beth had concerns with and so. What we, what we have to do is by resolution, um, though whether or not we can find that this proposed ordinance is consistent.
Yeah, that's an easier question.
Yes.
That's much easier, I don't think it's as simple as that.
So, 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 so what, so that we can discuss, can I get a motion to adopt resol, planning board resolution twenty-two oh six? Get a motion in a second, then we'll have discussion.
So. Angle there.
Oh, second, one new second, thank you, okay, so let's, let's, there's discussion, um, on, uh. On this. Gonna look and see if Hannah or Jim or Mike have anything they wanna jump in on. I gotta know, I gotta know.
I probably better stay out of the discussion, seems I came in late, but I did read it.
All right, thanks, Joe. Up here, anyone else?
I'm happy to say it will be forward.
Yeah, I'm happy with that, Beth. I think we said everything that, all of our concerns, um, Mike just kind of. Lit up, though.
He unmuted and then he re-muted, so. All right, so, um, the motion is to adopt the resolution finding that it is consistent. Subject to the following recommendations that we have already articulated and we'll get that all nice and typed up and I'll sign it, we'll send that off to the. Panel, so that everyone will be happy, all right. They're hearing at the next meeting.
At your next meeting, so it does. It's, no, it's, we just asked for it.
Okay, great, okay.
Would these changes be considered substantial?
That's a Tara question.
I got, I wrote a Tara's.
Uh. We're thinking they might be, you might wanna ask Tara.
So, yeah, no, I'm just kind of wondering if we need to reintroduce it.
It might be much, it might be a little later. Give us a chance, it would also give you time to tweak the language.
As well as maybe Tara could do that search on those definitions, if 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 we're gonna, if that, if we, if if it's, if Tara determines that this is substantial enough that we've gotta reintroduce. Strongly encourage us to just do that global search on those definitions. And take advantage of that time to do that and then.
And you'll put that into.
And then we can, um, and then quite honestly, if all these get incorporated, we can schedule a second review of this very quickly, because it's, you know, we won't have to go through this again.
Yeah.
We could do it kind of in successive meetings, so. Excellent, all right, roll call.
Mr. Singh Har?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Dave Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Doshka?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Waitson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
I'm staying.
Mr. Candy?
Yes.
All right, thank you, um, as soon as you get that all done. Get it all digital, email it, and I'll sign it, we'll go. Excellent, all right, um, item seven on the agenda is the public hearing for Captiva Main Street LLC. Block five, block twenty-two, continued from March eighth, twenty-second, April twelve, May twenty-fourth, June fourteenth. And June twenty-eighth of this year, uh, I'm going to. Promote the applicant to panelists, so click on okay there on that screen once you do that. If you wouldn't mind turning the camera on, on zoom, once you're in the panel. Uh, but you can leave it muted, because she'll get picked up on the microphone that's on the table.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Could you also please promote our site engineer and planner?
So that's John Barre.
And Eric Ho.
I think it's it's Burton Engineering, right, correct?
Sean, can you just make sure you talk to the microphone?
You've got some, you can pull it closer.
Yeah, yeah, it's wired.
Sound better?
Yeah, and 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 I hate to say this, turn, keep it turned, just, there you go, thank you, all right.
There you go. Just, the back is gonna fall off. Pull a little further.
There you go, all right, thank you, all right, so where we were last meeting, um, I just, just remind everybody, we had, um. We had heard all the testimony that was given, we had voted to, we had heard any public comment, we had voted to close the public hearing. And the board had been deliberating for a period of time, uh, on a number of items of concern, the applicant reserved the right to reopen the hearing and bring in, um, their. Witnesses if we needed more testimony on the record and so that was kind of where we left it and we'd kind of gotten to the point of. Being just about ready to possibly take action, recognize that there were a number of conditions that would need to be attached to any approvals if the board were to vote in that way. And so we, that's when we continued the hearing forward so that we could work those things out. Um, we had a draft that came out of comments from our discussion of items that Kara put together. Our board's professionals weighed in on it and the applicant's attorney weighed in on him as well and that was distributed to the board members, uh, earlier. Uh, everyone should have a copy of it and you also go for a copy of it there, so. What I'm going to say is, are there any other items of discussion amongst the board?
So on item number nineteen. Do you wanna say, uh?
Yeah, sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to, um. The, I I think number nineteen, it says the applicant shall utilize smart glass for the windows in the tower and I'm not sure. Exactly how that got it in there, but with the, um, the. Yeah, some, some random notes that were probably taken and I think it was misinterpreted, um, it's not bad or good. We were, the subcommittee was was meeting and, and, um. First of all, smart glass, it should, uh, should be referred to as low E, not smart, that's a whole other level of. Cost that we don't wanna burden you on here, I know the difference and I appreciate that, but more importantly, um. We had agreed before the, um, before COVID, we had met and and we had all talked about how all the windows will be low E, which is a pretty standard. Practice in the industry, so I think, in other words, number nineteen is, it's basically irrelevant, um. The low E requirement for all glazing, not just glass, but all glazing doors, et cetera. Um, will be included in the redevelopment agreement and therefore it's really kind of not necessary to even include it in here.
That, that's very helpful, because we didn't understand where it came from.
I'm not sure either.
But so this all makes perfect sense now that you said it.
All right, so I think that.
It's something I mentioned about.
It's fine, okay.
The power with flight, I think perhaps coming up.
Okay, yeah, and I think with the low E glass.
Yeah, that's fine, so we, I'm sorry, Jose Carvajal, are we, uh, replacing nineteen with low E, is that still a comment or is that?
Well, the redevelopment agreement that you're gonna be receiving is going to require you to put low E glass.
Well, I, I think there are already a number of things towards that end in the draft agreement, which, you know, we didn't have an issue with, so, yeah.
So we could, yeah, we're gonna pull it out of here, it'll be in the redevelopment.
Because we do have a general condition that they shall satisfy all requirements, obviously.
Exactly, this is just more words that are not needed.
Right, right.
So, may I make a suggestion? Um, you know, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, uh, I feel like I need to start here, once again, I'm Shun, yeah, the applicant's attorney. Uh, as you know, Jose Carvajal is here, he can answer any questions, Eric Ho and John Barry, the site engineer and planner respectively, are also available online to answer any questions. We don't have anything else to present, I don't think anything else has happened in in the time since we've been here, so we don't have any further testimony to present. I do appreciate the time that that Kara and I and, uh, the board's team of professionals and our work of, our, our team of professionals. Have had to kind of go through this list and make refinements, um, rather than kind of, I kind of wanna go through one by one.
We can absolutely.
Ninety percent of them I don't have any comments for, but there's also a number of them that, you know, I just kind of wanna get a little bit more color on or have a suggestion.
Okay, so Kara, should we, my, my question is, we, we are. This is the board discussion, right, and we're, you're okay with us having this kind of go through it one by one under board discussion?
I I don't have a problem with it, um, it may be. Helpful to hear Mr. McGowan's comments or thoughts or issues with some of these conditions and have, have you go through those first and then the board could. Take them into account as we go through.
Right, because right, because right now we haven't, no one's made a motion at all yet, so we're just, okay, that's right, so, so why don't we do that, why don't we go, why?
Okay, so you just want me to go through my comments?
Go through your comments.
Uh, sorry, so then I mean, I don't have a whole lot at all.
I do know of at least one showing that's come up and Bob was gonna address that, then I think it'll probably be Dr. Lewis.
So one very general comment that applies to. Probably five different of these points is we understand and appreciate and don't disagree with the burrows. Wanting to provide conditions to make sure that the operation and administration of the electric vehicle charging stations. Is done efficiently and orderly so that it doesn't become a nuisance to the borough, the neighbors, anyone. However, there's like six different conditions in here and some of them can become somewhat overburdening. And I, I would be happy to agree to a condition that, you know, summarizes what I just said, or even multiple conditions. But I do just feel like there, some of them are almost top of victory and I think that that's definitely one point of major discussion that we all need to have. And how do we take the six different EVSC conditions and, you know, make them into one or two?
Okay, so the ones that are directly related to electric vehicle charging stations, so on the draft set of proposed conditions. Item ten, right, provide for electric vehicle parking space. Um, item ten, right, uh provide for electric vehicle parking spaces um and make ready equipment uh.
I would say ten though, that's required by statute.
But that's what I'm saying, so that's what I was gonna say.
Yes, I would say that's.
Ten is required by statute and then we go to, I think, which is more of the stuff that is maybe of of of.
Confuse.
Confusion.
And and some, just so I can say, some are definitely contradictory because we haven't discussed it yet.
Right.
So there are placeholders for the fourth.
Right, so we've got eleven, twelve and thirteen, where there's notes in here from Kara about the board determining about. In the sur- on surface, in the structure, uh assigned, not assigned, and hourly limits, those were three items that were. Still open when we were last discussing it about the electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations, um and I think, was there, I think there was one more?
Go with.
Side EVs, somewhere else?
One at the end.
Twenty, well. Well, twenty-two and twenty-three, it says twenty-one and twenty-two, there should be twenty-two and twenty-three, and also forty-five and forty-seven.
Right. Yeah, so twenty-two talks about reserving of parking spots and then it relates back to it, twenty-three talks about.
But it reserves.
Is parking spots for visitors, which then relates back to the conditions for the EVs and then.
And twenty-five also.
And twenty, right, twenty-five also, and then the one is um, where's the one at the end?
I might have taken that out to listen.
No, forty-five.
Forty.
No, forty-five, yeah.
Forty-five, which is divided, which is in parentheth- which is parenthetical, which I think was more of like Kara didn't know if we wanted this or not. So uh the time limits for EV spaces, so let's, let's um. So if, understanding that condition ten is statutory, um it's clearly eleven, twelve, thirteen, and then the ones that follow from.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So where, where is the board on on this question and do we have a recommendation from the planner and engineer?
We might go through his general, if we want to stick with the board deliberating, we just remember.
Okay.
We're all working together here, we have a redevelopment agreement, however, at the end of the day, it's the board's decision what conditions to impose, not necessarily the applicant's willing to agree to.
Alright, fair. Okay. Fair enough, alright, so 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 that, those are the ones about EVs, what what else is there that we need to be talking about?
I think that uh. Apologies.
Oh, it's okay.
Got to use about thirty-seven times and there've been many different drafts. Uh so there's been, we've been kind of back and forth about um a letter of no interest for the Borough of Raritan. Which is now appropriate number, without resolve.
We've resolved that, that's fully resolved, it's out, it's taken out of, there was some confusion, some discussion at the last meeting about.
Okay.
A parcel or a portion of the parcel being located in Raritan, so I had the language in here, Bob has confirmed. As has Mr. McGowan, that there is no portion of this project that is located in Raritan's project whatsoever, so they don't need a letter of no interest, they don't need an application, they don't need anything.
And obviously as a condition, unless you could get started, there was notice to the adjacent property owners and township, right?
Yeah, so we're.
So we're covered.
Not only notice to the township, but also the individual property owners in Raritan, we we did properly receive.
Real estate.
The two hundred foot list and sent out notice of success.
Okay, so we're good there.
That's fine.
So we've resolved that.
Yep.
Alright.
And then the last one I think is thirty-four about the applicant and I think the uh Mr. Clerico agreed can come out because it's. Incorporated into uh Mr. Clerico's final review letter, which we are agreeing to.
So just for members of the public, the applicant shall ensure that the NJT will pick your app, access the rear of the buildings as and if necessary upon request. Is that the one you're reading?
Yeah, that that's it, that's taken care of in the letter.
It's in his letter, so the condition that, so the condition that says, not exactly, go ahead.
Letter raises the question, how are you getting access to that, um and that because your plan doesn't speak, my favorite response back to. People who revise plan was that you were not gonna be able to provide access to it. My response was, that's not an acceptable answer, we need some resolution, so I I was really raising. The question as to how are you going to accomplish it, I I agree with you, term DEP is inappropriate.
Right.
So can we just clarify for the record for what ac- access to what we're talking about, it's not the sort of building, I think that was by.
Alright, so the applicant. Yeah.
An article drafting.
Yeah, now the applicant is is part of their onsite stormwater management, one of their BNP's facilities, I believe is a subsurface. Storage, maybe it's a recharge facility, I believe it was a recharge facility, uh is behind building date. Uh and that's gonna require maintenance, maintenance is gonna require equipment getting here. And typically, it's gonna be some sort of an easement, um for protective purposes, restrictive purposes, uh but. We need to, if we're approving a plan, the details of of how you accomplish that could be a condition of approval, but the response from the applicant was that they were not going to be able. Because of restrictions associated with DEP permits for buffers or whatever, they were not going to be able to provide vehicular access, that that was the response, I think.
But then wasn't their testimony also about like blocking off a parking spot and.
Well, there was, yeah, and getting out of that.
Yeah, not not as that way, yes, there was some discussable, maybe.
Well, I think that's how the condition got on here is because, you know, worst comes to worst, we've talked about putting a door. In by a parking space with it being in the lease or whoever's assigned that space, that you need to provide access to the door if worst comes to worst. So uh to my understanding, that is how this became a condition of approval, so that. We can, we agreed to provide on the final plans a way for there to be access to the back of the building.
That's fine, again, the compliance, my my report is raising the question of how are you gonna do it, not, you know.
Okay.
So 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 if we were to strike DEP from this sentence and say the applicant shall ensure that.
Yeah.
Shall ensure access to the rear of the buildings.
And and quite frankly, I think I'm personally adding to the confusion on this, I think that's fine, it's just adding, they're removing the word DEP, I think that's fine.
Does that, that works? Okay.
Yes, one apologies over there, I mean, so.
I apologize, I'm not fully understanding.
Well, well, I mean, we might want to put, we might want to put some language in there, just say why the act just needs to be there though.
Yeah.
Right, because it's for.
As if this is a form request in order to.
Service the stormwater infrastructure. And let's not delineate what infrastructure it is, let's just because it's a.
Well, that will be part of the stormwater maintenance manual as well, right?
Yep.
And again, I was raising the question based on stormwater aspect, uh it's subsequent learning, best for one of the other conditions, you know, you. Your applicant doing a lot of planning back here, I don't know whether that's gonna require.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, whatever, so.
Sure. Yeah. We also.
So so maybe, so maybe we don't want to necessarily say it's just stormwater.
Yeah.
A- access to the rear, again, that when when plan comes in with what that plan exists and whatnot, we can get into how with it, maybe there's some sort of.
As if it's a necessary con request, the satisfaction of the board planner engineer.
Yeah, that works, that covers it, just maybe as a general, I mean, cover everything.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And strike the words that the DEP.
Yeah, forget the DEP, yeah, okay.
Yep.
The only other comment was from our engineer with number twenty-nine, if we could be specific on where we need to buy.
So. Okay, we were um. Well, actually, it it says, you know, compact space and so you're asking.
Uh that that's in building A.
Okay.
Uh there's one compact space and right next to it is twenty feet of courtway for cars to get in and out of the thirteen. Spaces that uh are dead end, they're right next to it, so just the the comment Mr. Clerico pointed out is that. With a narrow space next to a narrow aisle, doesn't work, I took a look at that with a template today in my office. And uh I I think it does work just because you're such low volume in and out of that thirteen space area, they're gonna probably go one at a time. But I think that's okay in that area.
So do you want us to make, is your recommendation to the board to include this as a condition of approval or are you satisfied that it works?
I I'm satisfied that it works, I looked at it myself with template.
And that's both the compact space and the.
So so Jay, you would be comfortable if the board did not include number twenty-nine, you you feel like we're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody's getting satisfaction, just scribbling.
I don't know if there's other stuff, but I would however like to frame a discussion for you on the distribution of EV spaces throughout.
We're gonna get to the EVs in a second.
I'm finished.
So, okay, alright, so let's, so alright, so let's, let's talk about the EVs and the parking of the assignments, the nonassignments and all the rest, let's let's get into all that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jay.
So.
And slide the mic over just to make sure that.
Globally speaking on the site, you have a hundred and seventy-four actual parking spaces for the residents and the visitors. In my opinion, at peak times of resident occupancy and visitor occupancy, you're gonna need most of those, you're gonna need upwards of a hundred and seventy of those. So I think that the supply needs to be as flexible as possible as it relates to the percentage of electrical vehicles. In the car population and the fact that that's gonna grow. And the state statutes provide a schedule for that, it says ultimately we want fifteen percent of these spaces to have EV charging stations, which would be twenty-nine. And it says that a third of them should be there right from day one and then within three years, the next third, and then within six years, the next third. Um in my opinion, they should be distributed. In corresponding ratios with the supply in each garage and each surface parking area, so that, but for example. Current plan, in my opinion, would not work with twenty-nine of the forty-two surface parking spaces having a sign that says electrical vehicle. Electric vehicle parking only not charged, that's that's a disproportionate ratio to how many people have electric vehicles. So, I mean, I I did a little schedule. Of how these twenty-nine could be distributed, and what I came up with was. Uh, six of the thirty-three in the building A surface lot would be planned for EV. Twelve of the seventy-five in the building A garage would be planned for EV. Two of the nine surface spots for in building B would be planned for EV and nine of fifty-seven in the building B garage would be planned for EV, and that is of the twenty-nine.
Jay, I'm sorry, can you go, when I, when you were saying, I waited too long to hear my text.
No, no problem.
Six?
Six of thirty-three on the surface lot at parking, by parking A, uh twelve of seventy-five.
Yes.
Of the spots in the garage under building A, two of nine on the surface lot uh near building B and nine of fifty-seven in the garage under building B.
Great, thank you so much.
So that to me would provide. The proper distribution of residents who would have electrical vehicles, possible visitors that would have them. Um they're going to be assigning all the garage spaces to tenants, they would have some in garages to assign. And I think it just provides more flexibility um for those surface spots for visitors.
So then you're 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 okay, so one of the conditions out there is about assigning or not assigning the electrical vehicle spots. And so what what do you, what do you suggest best practice here is?
So the suggestion would be for the ones in the garage. Tenants with electrical vehicles could be assigned one in the garage. And for the ones in the surface lot. They would remain open because there is an RSIS visitor requirement that requires those be open for visitors, so you can't really assign tenants up in the surface lot.
Okay, and then in terms of time limits, do you think that that's something we need to do or no?
I I think if you distribute them properly and then come online in accordance with the state code, you do not need.
Okay.
Most EV owners, they move there, you know, once it. It charges within two hours even on a uh household line, so. Once they've charged up, if they're in a a common spot, they usually move on in order to give somebody else a chance. I think that. I think that um the only concern I'd have is if people. That aren't associated, either visiting somebody in the the complex or, you know. Uses some of those common spots, I think that's a concern, um but I think that's something that the the. That would be responsibility of the management to to manage, not necessarily something we could put in a resolution.
The the the, you know, ownership management is not gonna want.
Exactly.
Random visitors, random people who are not visitors parking in the lot regardless of whether they have.
Right.
Exactly.
An EV or a combustion car.
Okay, okay, so so with that then, it sounds like that kind of handles eleven, twelve and thirteen.
One question, if if is the applicant gonna put it all in upfront, if not, how do you, how do you? Review and force whatever, one third, one third, one third.
Uh well, the the requirement is that all twenty-nine have to be prepared. But. They're allowed to actually have the charging station there according to the state schedule, one third, one third, so we have to know upfront. At the twenty-nine are underground wired.
So the twenty-nine, the tw- total of twenty-nine is make ready with a third of. With a third operational on day one.
Correct.
Okay.
It doesn't preclude the applicant, right, more than that, if from the marketing standpoint, if you have more than that, it's appropriate.
Right.
Okay, um so would it be appropriate to include as a condition that. That location of the first third coming online need to, I mean, we don't need to review that, right?
I think the location of all of them need to be set because as I understand it, the wiring needs to be run.
Right, no, no, I'm saying like we don't, and so we don't really care which third they turn on first from a site plan perspective, right? I mean, as long as, as long as six are on on the surface lot on A and twelve are in the garage in A, which, which, you know. Four of those twelve under building A to decide to turn on first, but then second and a third wave is really irrelevant to us, right? It's a matter of prerogative.
Yeah, I I agree with that.
Okay, um. Okay, so we don't necessarily need a condition of approval for that.
I think what I'll super well propose to do is, in in connection with item ten. That basically says for the statutory requirements, I'll reference the number and we also have to comply with the three here, one third, one third, one third requirements that are in statute.
Yes.
Kind of slot that out, so that's fair.
Okay, we have to, what do you want to say, so obviously we have a issue with you.
Exactly.
Okay.
And then uh break down what the breakdown case.
That would be separately where we're under.
That's.
Under eleven.
Yeah, I I, what I'm thinking is a condition eleven then becomes the schedule that Jay put out.
That Jay put out.
Condition twelve is that electrical, electric vehicles parking spaces will not be assigned.
Yes.
In the surface lot, but will be assigned to the garage or not, it was in the garage and then.
So wait, hold on, stand there for a second, so not on the surface, but in the garage?
Yes, yeah, so the tenants have it and then thirteen goes away because we don't need, we're we're not saying about time limits. Right, does that make sense?
Yep, that goes away and going back to twelve.
Yeah.
Um we do not want to see on the plans which ones are going to be assigned. In the surface, so all the ones in the surface, the ones in the garage will be assigned to ones the surface will not, sorry.
Everything in the surface. Yep, got it, okay.
The the plan's gonna show where they're gonna put them.
Correct.
Right, right, yeah, okay, so then that brings us to twenty-two. Which uh. Then I think becomes clear that we, and we've already said this, the parking spaces in the garage shall be reserved solely for tenants of the project.
Yeah.
I think the tenant needs that because by design, all these buildings have, I mean, we have no issue.
Yeah, and then so everything that is in parentheses can go away, right, because we've established that. Twenty-three, the parking space in the surface lot shall be reserved for visitors and tenants of the project, which is fine, it's consistent with what we just did with eleven and twelve.
Correct.
Um twenty-five, the tenant.
Four.
That's where's the plan is.
No, twenty-four.
Twenty-five, the tenant parking spaces shall be reassigned by way of lease amendments if the tenants need to change with regard to electric vehicle parking spaces, um.
But we're not, we're, you know what, going back to twelve.
Yeah.
I think that my intention there was not only, maybe I should have made it clear and done two there, assign on the plans.
Yeah.
But not, so there's two issues, assign on the plans as to where they're going to go.
Right.
But assign to a particular unit, that's a separate issue.
That, I don't know that you have, your plan's not gonna say that this parking space of the year is due to number twenty-two or something.
No, I don't think so, because.
I forget, what was the mix you had of units, I mean, you have, they have some tenants that only have one car.
I'm sorry, was that part?
You have some tenants, they only have one car.
Correct.
You had.
Yeah, that I don't think, we can, we can't assign the EVSCs on the plan to individual units. Because that's what's going to have to be flexible and will have to change over time.
Sure.
Based on.
I think what we're saying is that the the parking garage is gonna have a gate and it's only gonna be accessible to tenants.
Correct, yeah.
And you have it, you have how many spaces in the garage?
Seventy-five and fifty-seven.
And you have less apartments than that. So you're, as part of the management, you're going to buy rent an apartment and I want two spaces, that's gonna come with my lease, and you're gonna tell me you could park. Over here, you can park over there.
Correct.
Um and if I happen to have an EV, you can sell, you can, you can have this EV and whatever.
Correct.
That's not beyond plan.
And do, and does that, for this, that needs to be a condition of approval about, because because when Kara's got here. And do, and does that, for this, that needs to be a condition of approval about, because, because when Tara's got her draft for twenty-five is a question of, do, do we need to?
Well, I think, are you going to assign any parking spaces to any particular tenant? So if the answer to that is no, then this is the way.
Not particular parking spaces to any particular tenant, you know, your space number fifty-seven isn't gonna necessarily go to, uh, unit twenty-three.
Okay, they will just be tenant parking spaces in the garage.
But tenant spaces will be assigned based on when they come in, because we need to have uh, organization in the garages in particular, because by design, these are compact uh, spaces, not, not the individual space, but the, the area, the general parking area is generally compact.
So you're saying that I rent unit one and I get one garage space and one surface space?
If you, yes, I mean,
Like that, that, that type of assignment versus if parking space twenty-five in the garage.
That type of thing, exactly, exactly.
In this particularly small.
You're talking about.
No, 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 we're not saying surface, but every, everyone, every tenant is gonna be up in the garages. And what we're saying is that if you've got a multi-bedroom unit, you may get two parking spaces, and if you've got a one-bedroom unit, you may only get one parking space, that's gonna be the term of their lease. But they're gonna park anywhere they want to in the garage.
Wait, I mean, no, no.
No, no.
They need assigned spaces in the garage.
We need assigned spaces because what Mr. Trautman was saying before about how that twenty-one, that drive aisle works, that, that wouldn't work in the general public.
Yeah.
But where you have tenants who are used to going to the same spot, they know, oh, if there's somebody coming out, I gotta, I gotta hang back a little bit. It's that familiarity with the space that permits situations like that.
So you argue, so, so a particular tenant will be assigned a particular spot in the garages.
Correct.
And all we're doing is saying that's gonna, they're gonna figure out which spaces go in which apartment, that's not gonna be on the plan.
Can I make a suggestion for twice? I think we just need to strike everything related to electric vehicles on there, just say the tenant parking spaces shall be reassigned uh, by way of lease agreements, or should be assigned by way of the lease agreements. Um, and if tenants, you know, as, as, as the tenant, as the tenants' needs arise, I don't think you need to address electrical vehicles in here. It should reference the, I think we could simplify even more and just say the, the underbuilding or the garage parking spaces shall be assigned to tenants.
Okay, so then let's add as lot, so then here's, here's how we're gonna do this, make it easier. Twenty-two, which talks about parking spaces in the garage.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
The parking spaces in the garage shall be reserved solely for the tenants of the project
Oh, yeah. And assigned to.
and assigned to tenant, and it's, and, and, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. And then strike twenty-five.
And then strike twenty-five, it'll be all, all together.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't even see this.
Bingo.
Okay, alright.
So twenty-two is the parking.
I was trying to make twenty-five look like twenty-two, we don't need it.
So twenty-two is the parking spaces in the garage shall be reserved solely for and assigned to tenants of the project.
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-five comes out, and then twenty-three, I'm sorry, bad job.
And the assigned to. No, sorry, the assigned to takes care of it, yep.
And then in twenty-three, is that accurate, the parking spaces on the surface lot shall be reserved for visitors and tenants?
Yeah. Oh, we're sorry.
It's not tenants, it's visitors only.
Yeah, we said tenant, little tenants on the surface.
So let me clarify this, the surface lot, you cannot have spaces assigned to tenants in the surface lot, but tenants certainly could use them, they're open parking.
Alright, so that word assigned.
You have to have a certain amount of open parking for visitors within your total supply.
So is the, so is the word reserved the wrong word?
Utilized by.
Utilized by.
Spaces should be utilized by visitors, tenants.
That's just, it's simply just a little bit of public parking.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
And tenants.
That's it, exactly. Utilize, not reserve, good, good.
And the garage is gonna be gate control access.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I.
Should we include that?
Go ahead, yeah.
Isn't there, Beth, can you use that?
I know.
Yes, thank you. Is isn't there an issue about a single parking space for a neighbor?
There is, but that is a
There is, it's being addressed in the redevelopment.
I don't, I just wanna make sure our resolution doesn't create a conflict.
Or is otherwise determined in the redevelopment agreement?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Just add that little extra, that cover, okay?
Yeah, if it's reserved only for tenants, I think we've got a problem, but that's, that's perfect.
That's gonna be addressed, and we've already discussed that with these guys too, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I emailed the D F.
Yeah, I, I just thought of it.
Okay, I, I thought about it when we checked.
This is good, this is good. Um, and then, um, see, I think I was we, we did thirty-four, we did, um.
Oh wait, yeah, forty-five and forty-seven.
Yep. Okay, so forty-five, um, we are hearing from Jay um, that time limits for EV spaces is not necessarily something we have to do?
Right, as long as you're distributing the supply, like, we're done, I think.
Does anyone on that board object to striking forty-five?
Should there be something in there, and maybe it is, and I'm just not catching it, that EV spaces should be used only by EV vehicles?
Yeah, 'cause they have signage that says that, actually, all their EV spaces, like I said, electric vehicle parking only by charge.
Yeah. Did it go to Wawa, you know, that, kids with their big trucks parked in the Teslas around this place?
I've said the only thing with forty-five is you could put a limit on time on the visitor spaces, on the, on the surface parking. I think that's appropriate, um, because then you're kind of, like I said, most of the EV people are kind of like, okay, I've charged, I'm gonna move on, but some people are kind of curious.
Yeah, but what will, what will somebody like them, you know, in a way.
And, and, and their signage says EV parking only, and I think that their proposal covers this.
Yeah, I think we can take it out and be okay.
Yeah.
I'm a little wary of the planning board getting involved in what I think are gonna end up being lease arrangements with lease arrangements with their tenants, you know, if, I'm not sure how much the borough cares about a two-hour time period for a surface EV space if these folks are managing their property.
That was my, yeah.
It's an issue between tenants, they're gonna deal with this, I don't think it's that important.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can pull it out. Um, and then the only other thing that's on here, that's in, that's in parentheses, which uh was brought up before is number forty-six. Porch determine if it wants to live activities and hours of the gym porch.
Is that what I'm following?
Well, we didn't have a better name for it.
I know.
You know what I mean?
I, I, we talked about this last week.
You did, you have it in there though also with the noise word in it, so, you know, you can't have, you're not gonna be able to have somebody out there grunting and lifting weights at eleven o'clock at night because it might be violation of the noise order.
Right, so I, there are people who work out at different hours.
You never know, somebody gets home from work and I only want to get up early.
They get up early in the morning. Health class is busy at five a.m.
So I think that it's, you know, the use of the outdoor area should conform to the borough.
Borough ordinance, yeah.
And honestly, there's any other, and if there's any other concern, if there's any other concern that comes up, um, it could certainly, it could certainly go into the redevelopment agreement if, 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 if council feels that there's anything else that we're not thinking about.
No, wait, that covers any like, any like, you know.
You know. Solo activity. Yeah, and the thing is, I also don't want, you know, somebody gets home at midnight and they wanna do their yoga, and that's a quiet solo activity, you don't wanna restrict them from doing it if it's a nice night.
Yeah, okay.
The electric vehicle chargers are, shall be universal, just as the key. It, it's because you don't, you can't just have all Teslas and one nobody else that'll be able to handle that. Um, um, we do need to go back though, um, when, during the I'm sorry, on item number fourteen, uh, we discussed that at the, we discussed that at the uh redevelopment agreement meeting earlier today, so I don't know if Beth wants to touch on that. Yeah, I wrote this proposed condition, so I'm very comfortable with it, and it basically requires that your fifteen affordable units meet all of the, the applicable standards.
True, that's fine, it's typical, it's to be expected, okay.
There's a building chart in one of your plans, I'm sorry, I don't know the source, that has an incorrect number of three-bedroom units.
So, so the three-bedroom units are normally?
You're gonna do three of them, of, of affordable units?
Well, it's fifteen percent, it's a minimum fifteen percent of them.
It's a minimum twenty percent three-bedroom units. Fif- fifteen percent affordable units, twenty percent of your affordable units need to have three bedrooms.
Correct.
And I think that's three total, so.
Right, yeah.
That was the clarification. Yeah, there's no change required to the condition, I just wanna make sure that you guys are clear on that.
Right, but I think that, um, if, if we see the benefit of approval, we'll be reaching out shortly to start that whole process.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks for your clarification.
Um, so it feels like
One, one, one thing.
No, go ahead.
Thirty-five, um, the borough engineer is giving the sewer N-word.
The applicant shall obtain approval from the borough engineer regarding the sewer connection, and you're saying
Right.
Sewer N-word.
Sewer N-water?
N-water, and there's a number of things in the redevelopment agreement that address sewage.
I should, we're gonna say here, you can say both.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And just for my education, forty-two, the generators on the roof are screening, is that just visual or noise, or is that not necessarily safe?
I thought it was visual screening.
Yeah, I just asked this, right, just a screening.
I'll say visually screened, yeah.
I, I also came across one more traffic item today.
Go ahead.
Didn't get to care of. And I can either add it into number thirty-eight regarding crosswalk with the county or with the vacant zone, and that is uh, that they will uh pursue the traffic signal timing change at North Main and Walter Ferran, the traffic engineer testified that they wanna shift ten seconds of green to Walter Ferran, which I noticed out there, Walter Ferran backs up and needs a little more green. And the county in their advisory comments also generally saying that there should be tracks.
I think we can add that to thirty-eight because it's, both of those are applying to the county, right?
Right.
So, okay, yeah, let's add that to thirty-eight.
Could I throw in one thing?
Jim, please.
Sorry, um, in all of the question, or all of the conditions that I see in here, my questions are more or less for Bob. Uh, I'd raised a question about the floodplain regulations at the last meeting. Uh, is there anything in the new floodplain regulations that would affect these, including the D E P's attempt to raise the floodplain level by two feet regulations?
Well, it says in here, first of all, have the, the new D E P regulations actually been adopted?
They got tabled.
Well, it's that, I didn't know whether the, they would not be affected by those, that's my main thing, is whether they would have to comply with them or not. I don't, don't the exact thing.
I mean, when you're there, and what they are, they could be, but we have a condition, you have to get all school and including but not limited to, and one of the, including but not limited to a D E P.
So if, so right now there are no new regs, they were tabled, and we, we, we think we know what they might look like, but we
Yes.
don't know, and they're gonna have to get outside agency, so even the interim between when they've satisfied the conditions of this approval, absent D E P, and then they have to go to D E P, if those rules change.
They need approval from D E P for what, under the current regulations, for what they're proposing.
Right, so the rules change.
At that occasion, D E P's can review it under whatever set of rules or it affects.
Right, so, so we can't, I mean, I don't know, I don't, because we have outside agency approval, I don't think Jim, that there's anything else necessary for us to make sure that they, listen, if, if they, if, if D E P adopts, if new rules are adopted and they are then are subject to review under new rules, and it substantially changes this project, they're gonna have to come back for an amendment to the site run anyway, and that, that would be regardless of anything, so I, I don't, I don't think there's any condition that would necessarily.
Okay, now, I, I just wanted to check on that because I knew that the new regulations were in flux, and I just didn't know whether they'd come into effect for this one or whether we beat the clock out.
Can I ask a question though? Why was every civilian here in the state trying to file two weeks ago on that Friday? If, doesn't, the
Because they, they were real for a while.
Yeah.
They were very close.
Yeah, the New Jersey Builders Association filed an injunction or it's sued for them, and that got tabled for, you know, foreseeable future.
I went on vacation for last week, I missed this.
So did I.
Alright, so, so every site plan application, whether it's filed, e- even if it's filed already, it may be, maybe, uh,
Well, there was a lot of
Depends on, wow, wow.
There was a lot of concern about the availability.
Yeah, right.
Wow.
Because
Yeah, I was worried about the trigger date on that, that's
There's, there's some discussion, as Brian was saying a minute ago, there's been some discussion that there, there would be an effect immediately and not allow for any retroactive.
That's not fair.
It's completeness, if you can leave complete, then there's no
That, that wasn't even clear.
Yeah, they're filing as an emergency rule.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't understand.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll, we'll talk about that later, um, okay.
I hope that doesn't happen to you.
Alright, any other?
We're respecting it too, quite frankly.
Alright, so anybody else, anybody else with anything else to discuss, why is?
Um, I think, uh, again, uh, based on the conversation that I had today with the redevelopment, um, uh, agreement meeting, I just wanted to, uh, assure everyone that all the sustainable requirements that we discussed during, during the, this whole hearing, um, either are currently in the redevelopment plan from what I could see today, or they still are actually from two years ago, or we clarified them, and Beth's working on that, so um, everything sustainable that we had talked about during this hearing, from what I can see so far is, is in the redevelopment agreement, so um, that one line in these that says it will comply with the redevelopment agreement, essentially all the sustainable requirements are rolled into that.
Yep.
So we don't have to worry about specifying them here.
Okay. So what I'm looking for right now is a motion to, if someone wants to. Driver moves.
To
To motion to grant, um, we are, we are preliminary final, final site plan, subject to the conditions that we have delineated extensively.
We do have some waiver requests.
And there's some waiver and requests, they're on the back of the last page there, right? Yes, C variant, let me make sure I got this right, for the record, C variants for the height of the tower on building A, a de minimis exception for the drive aisle width, a de minimis exception for the radius of the curb cut, a waiver for compliance with the borough's lighting ordinance, and a de minimis waiver for compact parking spaces. So it is subject to those, that one variance, one waiver, and, but two waivers and few exceptions, and then the conditions that we just hashed out, so we have a motion for um, so lighting was, the foot handle was just
It's a little high, I think we're
Yeah, it's a little high, maybe it's adjusted, brought it down, but it didn't quite conform to the ordinance.
Okay, slightly brighter in one small section.
Yes, yeah.
So the testimony from our engineer was that the borough has a slightly abnormally low requirement for light, so we got as close as we could while maintaining safety.
Alright, so that was the mo, that was, we have a motion to, to, for approval from Driver, do I have a second?
Engelhardt, second.
Engelhardt, second, is there any further discussion from members of the board?
I'm happy to see this moving forward, I mean, there's been a lot of effort put into it, and over the years, the redevelopment committee on forward, and I think we have we consider it the best we can.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, uh, overall.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dashton?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Waitspoon?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, we're forward to present forward with the redevelopment aspect, and hopefully, uh, come to the agreement and take the round.
So, I will shoot an email, but next Tuesday.
Sure.
Uh, you'll want your engineer there.
We'll, we'll have a, not a problem with that front line, but, thank you, everyone.
Alright, I'm just moving your professionals off the screen. Alright, um, item eight on the agenda this evening, and I announced this before, but we're gonna do it official kosher right now. Uh, the continuation of the public hearing for family promise of Hunter County, uh, block nineteen, lot seven and eight, uh, eight New York Avenue, which was continued from June fourteenth. I announced it before, but what we are going to say is this, this matter is being carried to our July twenty-sixth meeting. Note for, in this room, no further notice to be granted. At that time, um, we anticipate being able to announce, if not before then, an alternative venue for that hearing, which will like, which we, which should be, we're anticipating on our August ninth meeting, but to keep this official and whatever, we are carrying to twenty-sixth, we have a letter from, uh, the applicant's attorney agreeing to this, um, as well, and, uh, before, at, we will certainly announce at the meeting, uh, where we're gonna carry it to, um, we do not have that location yet, um, we have to find an appropriate venue, that would allow for the size of, of audience that we are anticipating, as well as, um, hopefully being able to do a hybrid meeting with remote, but I can't promise anything, we're gonna have to wait and see what, what we can do about that. Um, so that is being carried, no further notice, uh, will, uh, will be, uh, provided, that is item eight.
I have one, um, should, should I reject the applicant's attorney to provide an extension of time? We're probably gonna have that at the end, so, I would say do it through the end of ours, to the end of ours, okay?
Yes. Good, okay, item nine is chair items, alright, so, um, our next meeting is on July twenty-sixth, I've already said this a couple of times, but again, for the record, I will not be here.
Neither will Mr. Cook.
Neither will Mr. Cook, and is there anybody else who's not gonna Either will Mr. Cook, and is there anybody else who's not gonna be here, let us know. Right now, what do we have on the agenda for the meeting on the twenty sixth?
We have potentially the resolution for the capta, um, application that we concluded today. We do need to schedule the extension, uh, request for the Curro Sheriff's property at fifty four East Main Street. So if that's okay, we'll add that to the, um, and that's, that's about it. We are still waiting for information, uh, more materials to be submitted for the one forty four Main Street and the Wordsville properties. Uh, I do anticipate that the Courthouse Square, they're almost ready to, um, submit an amended site plan. There was a a a request from, uh, the Courthouse Square applicant regarding, uh, amended fees. Site plan fees, uh, there's no really, the block table again, and there was nothing, um, that says, you know, clarifies whether it's amended, and it's up to, I guess, the board's discretion, I'm not sure.
So is there no fee for a for a site plan amendment, or if you not have that?
There's not, nothing in the.
Nothing says, there's nothing in it that says specifically amendment.
Wow.
We don't have a fee that's specifically for an amendment, we have a site man fee, yeah.
We have amended site plans before.
Yeah, we would, I know.
Yes.
There's nothing in that schedule for a site plan amendment.
Wow.
Well, we have found this administrator who's coming through word, and it's just funny.
We have these, uh, things that we have.
So 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 clearly.
That should be addressed.
That should be addressed, but clearly, um.
If I was, what if I was the developer's partner, I'd say there's no fee here.
Well.
Or they did revert to the actual, it's a site plan, so.
Oh, I, yeah, I see.
Enough, so you're, let's, let's just generally, as far as ordering it, it may.
Or does it. Yeah, right. Right, exactly, yeah. So so I I mean, part of, part of the, part of it is to cover the costs of reviewing an application. But when there's, we're not reviewing the totality of this application, we are reviewing an aspect of the piece.
It was two components, you have an administrative cost, which is your application fee.
Right.
And then you have your escrow fees, and that's a function that's involved in, for you.
Right.
We have, we have to, we have to be able to afford to pay these guys.
Well, the escrow is one.
That, yes, yes, that's.
Right, so, so the other, the other question I'm gonna ask is, does the redevelopment agreement for Courthouse Square have anything about amendments if, or fees, I thought there was something in there about fees about something. You don't know, you have a whole document off the top of your head?
Age fifteen, one twenty five.
So if if the redevelopment agreement is silent on who we pay a fee for an amendment, right, I mean, it's it is an area of redevelopment, I mean, that's that's everything, so, um, you know, is there, do, do we, what do we do, like, that's the question, right?
That's the question.
Is there a, is there a recommendation from our esteemed panel of professionals?
Oh, what I said, it's a silent, and you charge a fee, it's a, it's a new application.
Oh, without looking. Yeah. Yeah.
I will say this, I did have, I did, I do have with another board, uh, a very similar issue, it, not an amendment, but
That's what we did with that.
a very large piece of property that only a portion of it is being developed. And it is being developed for what could potentially be inherently beneficial use, that's not necessarily important, but the issue of how to interpret the fee requirements has come up, and one of the things they're looking into, there hasn't been a determination is, but do we look at the site, meaning the site that is the area being disturbed, or the overall property? So I I don't even know if we can do that here, I don't know if there's any language here, we have to really take a look at it, but then the flip of that, if there's nothing there to take a look at, then it's which side of the point you fall on, there's there's no delineation, so it's a strict site plan as if your, the original one was coming in.
Yeah.
Or not.
So so the, what the the, without getting into the merits of what's being proposed, what they're talking about is the porch, the, uh, this this piece, which because which which is not a.
Yeah, something else, yeah.
I mean, with the lease requirement.
Well, that's not what was in the email.
No, but.
Oh, it's not gonna do this too too much.
So it's not gonna do this too much, but 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 what Kara's point was of, uh, the totality of the project was fifteen blocks, a lot blocks, or roughly, something like that. The amendment may be affecting only two or three or four, some subset of of lots within the larger project area.
So it's something to look at.
So that's a possibility is to think, is to to determine it based on the or the amount of.
Would you, you know, you know, look at your words, I I just do a quick look to see if there was sort of a major amendment, and basically, it looks like you you said it's a four hundred dollar application fee.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, there is something.
Well, that's just, that's right. For an application, for a.
For a single, for an application sheet, yes. Okay.
So we won't have to spend any more time.
That's easy, okay, that's.
So, alright, so then I would.
But there would need to be an escrow, there's certainly.
There would have to be an escrow, but we can, that's, you have a bit of flexibility, alright, so so here, so then, so so since the ordinance is silent,
uh. listen, if the ordinance is silent, we have to charge them the the application fee that's listed, and then let's, you know, the professionals determining the escrow will take into account the scope of what's being.
Yeah, and your ordinance is.
And isn't it under our discretion after the fact to waive that fee if we want?
You can always ask for more, I don't know if you can waive it.
Exactly. Okay, um, will this affect by factory as well, aren't they, uh, amended site plan as well?
I think they're coming in front of news.
Yeah, it's a, it's a. No, it's four hundred dollars, people are spending tens of millions to build a property that's four hundred dollars.
No, no, I, no, I know, it's it's.
Right, but if the, I think the escrow is also based on, um, I said, construction costs or something like that. We've already spent more money discussing it.
Yeah, I mean, there, now you're talking, if I understand what the cement is, or pay, and we'll talk generically here. If it's, if it's a modification of a building, there is no site improvement necessarily, so it's.
Okay, so here's what we're gonna say, the 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 ordinance is silent for an amendment, the application fee is four hundred dollars, that's what it is. We are telling the mayor and whoever else is watching, that perhaps we might want to consider updating our ordinance to consider an amendment having a different fee schedule, and we'll leave it at that. Leave it at that. Yeah.
It'll happen again, so it's not just the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, Bob could, um, possibly do a calculation based on.
Yeah.
I think she needs an answer, I think that's.
Well, no, the the answer, the fee is four hundred dollars, that's the.
Yeah, right, but I'm talking about the escrow.
The escrow is different, the escrow, I think we ask for professional.
But how do you plan, we we do that.
We've done that for a few applicants, I think we should, we can have our professionals
That's what we plan.
Do a assessment of the escrow, that's, that's, yeah, okay, anything else under chair items?
They're gonna write it.
I have something that that to to remind you to announce, and I forgot.
I don't remember.
I forgot what I told, what I had.
Anybody else?
The master plan subcommittee.
Master plan subcommittee is meeting, uh, this week.
That's what I, that's what I, yeah.
Master plan subcommittee is meeting on Thursday after, early, late afternoon?
Yes.
Two thirty.
Two thirty, mid afternoon, on Zoom, two thirty, yes.
Two thirty, that's what I asked.
If you're using your space on there, because.
I think we're using for Zoom.
Yeah.
So, yeah, alright, anybody else with chair items? I have one thing under chair items, um, and I'm gonna save this, and then we're gonna move on to pay the bills, um. I thought speaking about particular applications that I that I have refused myself from, and I haven't participated in, but, um, get off Facebook, please. Get off Facebook, and and Susan, I'm sorry, you were on one of the pages commenting on one of, on the ladies, and some of these other pages, get off Facebook. You can, members of this board have an obligation to hear what is in front of them on on the merits of what's presented in a public hearing, and I don't, people have their rights to participate in what they wanna participate in as private individuals, but remember, the privilege of serving on this board means that you are known in the community as being somebody who has some authority, some expertise, and some sense of responsibilities to what's going on. And when you, when any of us open our mouths about anything that's in front of the board, it's a problem, it's a problem, when any of us put stuff out there that is pro or con about a pending application, we 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 could potentially open us up for a ridiculous amount of litigation and lawsuits, and I'm just saying this as clear as day. I don't wanna see anybody else posting on any of these pages about stuff that's in front of the board. It's, it is an honor and privilege to serve as a member of 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 the planning board, and part of that means that you hold yourself up to a certain level of disengagement with the fray and the chaos and the the nonsense that occupies these spaces, and I was really upset to see posts by members of the board regarding the family promise application, I really was hoping that we could avoid that nonsense that unfortunately plagued prior members of this board under other applications in the past. It is crucial that the the evidence and discussion and deliberation happens in this room under a public meeting under the rules that are laid out, period, and if folks can't follow that, they should consider whether or not they wanna stay on the board, and that's, that's what I'm gonna say, so, item ten is pay the bills. Those were circulated earlier, can I get a motion order for bills?
Agreed.
Second.
One, two seconds.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dashna?
Yes.
Mrs. Englehardt?
Yes.
Ms. Waitzmann?
Yes.
And Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Kara, do you have a train's report? Beth?
No.
Bob?
No.
Jay?
No.
Executive session?
No.
Those who return?
Agreed.
One second.